Okay. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and, you know, welcome to our December 10th virtual Library Board of Trustees meeting. And just as a reminder, before we start, this regular trustees' meetings will be conducted remotely and be held by video conference. This is from advised by the executive order to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus. The council chambers will not be open for the meeting. Trustees will be participating remotely and will not be physically present in the council chambers. And this is Zoom, right? So we're on Zoom, right, Kathy?
Yes.
So, yes. So the public is invited to be to join us on the Zoom meeting. And I think that's, that takes care. And then again, during the meeting, if you have anything that you need to say or just kind of, you know, wave your hand and I'll call on you. Okay. And shall we then have Sean? You want to do roll call?
Sure. Bianca Richards.
Present.
David Yous.
Here.
Deborah Beatle.
Here.
Annie Chang.
Here.
Dr. Melina.
Present.
Thank you.
And again, as you heard from Kathy, there we have no council liaison. They haven't been appointed. That person hasn't been appointed yet. And, and I forgot, did we have any public comments? Sorry.
There, there were no public comments.
Thank you. And there's no presentations, so we'll move on to our first action item. And I hope everybody got a chance to review the minutes of our November meeting. Any questions, concerns, discussions? Hearing none, can I, a motion to approve of the minute?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, so the minutes have been approved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So the minutes for the November meeting have been approved. And our next action item is approval of the Library Board of Trustees annual report. And, um, again, did you all get a chance? You know, I started that draft report. David, I think you asked that we make sure we highlight the new staff. And so I went, we went back and made sure that that was in there. Any other edits or comments, concerns, questions in regards to the 2020 annual report?
Very good. I thought it was very good.
Well, well, I started it and of course Kathy and I don't, you know, finished it. So the finished product has a lot to do with Kathy. So thank you very much, Kathy. But I kind of gave a skeleton outline for it. So thank you, Kathy. And then can I, so then this, how does this work? So David, you have more experience with these kinds of things. So where does this go then?
The timeline is that the annual reports are approved in December, and they will go to council in February at the same time as the Commissioners Congress. So, and in fact, for the Commissioners Congress, we'll probably have to prepare like a PowerPoint type, you know, the four bullet points that we want to emphasize. But the written report will be a receivable file to the city council in February.
Right. And then just as a reminder, if any of you wanted to go look back at past reports, it's, they're on our website under the library. Kathy reminded me that the past reports were there. So, so this will then just be part of that. So do I have, are we all okay with this annual report? Any questions, edits, concerns?
We need to, do we need to approve it or is that good?
Approve it.
I need, we need to approve it.
Then I move approval.
Second.
All right, so for our, this action item number four, it's been moved and approved, moved and second to approve the annual report for 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, thank you very much, everybody. So our, our Board of Trustees annual report for 2020 will go forward. And, hey, now we're on to discussion items. Kathy, do you take over the discussion items?
So the first, well, yeah, the first discussion item is, is the Board of Trustees work plan. So that was in your packet. I can share that on screen. Let me get that up on screen so that
Great, thank you.
Member of the public will be able to see it. Give me one second.
And also, thank you, Sean and Kathy, for putting the packet together for all of us. So thank you again.
Sorry, I'm slow. I don't know why I'm so slow. Here it is, okay. Let me share my screen. Okay. This is a little bit small, so let me make this a little bit bigger.
You might have to, yeah, there it is.
Yeah. And let me move you guys out of the way a little bit. Hopefully you can see this, I hope, okay? These are the, this is the format that the city clerk gave us to fill this out. I'm not a huge fan of it. It's a little bit breaking it down into a lot of, it could be much easier, it's just bullet points. But the first thing, the first one is the objective to finish up the administrative policy review. So that's here and would continue to just happen incrementally throughout 2021. The next thing is to update emergency, emergency plan and procedures. And that's our next discussion item. We'll go into some detail about kind of where we are with that. But that would happen in the coming year, which will be helpful. The third thing is hopefully to undertake a look at the state education code and then the South Pasadena Municipal Code that governs this body so that we can make sure that it's current and actually covers the things that it should cover and that it gives you guys the authority that you should have. It's been a long time. I think it's like 1997 that they adopted this kind of half admin and half advisory model. And I just think that it would be helpful for us to, to look at that and make sure that we have an ordinance that really reflects what you guys do. So that's what that is. And then the last thing is to start thinking about the strategic planning process. I looked at a, I looked at the fiscal years. I don't think it's very likely that we'll need to allocate funds in the next fiscal year. But, but if we do, we would want to do that before like the February or during the, maybe the February meeting so that we got it into the budget process with the city for the, for the, for that budget cycle. So those are the four items that we talked about at the last meeting. And if this looks okay, it's not an action item today. It would be, any revisions would be made. And then in January, when we have our new board member, we would vote, at that time, you would vote to approve it.
Kathy, I'm wondering if we want to have something relating to the reopening of the library or support of the COVID-19 reopening or anything along those lines?
I guess you guys can discuss that and think about whether that's something that's appropriate for, for your goals. I guess in my mind, there's so many unknowns, I'm not sure.
What I have in mind really, Kathy, is that anything that we can do as a board to assist in that effort, either, you know, endorsing what you're planning to do or just anything in general relating to that, you know? Because it's looking more and more that it's going to be a few months before the library maybe opens.
Possibly.
What do you think?
Yeah, we could add some, you know, an objective that's the board, you know, yeah, to support the reopening or the reintroduction of services in a safe and, you know, appropriate manner, something to that effect. Sure, we could add something like that.
But isn't, isn't most of that dictated by the Health Department and the state's Health Department? They, they set out pretty thorough guidelines as to what we can do and how many people can be in the library, et cetera.
Correct. But, but there are some libraries that are now still you can go into.
Right.
There are some libraries, you know, in Southern California that I believe you can go into.
In the county of Los Angeles, it's now just one.
Is it just now?
It's Alhambra. And, yeah, it's, it's the only library that's open in this county is Alhambra. Altadena had been open for, you know, short visits, but they have now closed completely, including their curbside service.
I agree with you, Mary, on that, that, yes, a lot of the protocols are outlined. And I think Kathy, if I'm correct, they largely are geared towards almost the retail operations. Am I correct?
Yeah, currently libraries are specifically called out as, by the county as being able to be open to the public at 20% capacity. Clearly, they're out of step with the reality of libraries because none of the libraries are comfortable opening. So it's, but yes, I mean, ultimately, we could, we could be open according to the county. I guess that, in my thinking, David, is that it's sort of a given that whatever the library is doing during the year, the board is going to weigh in on those things and either support or, or guide differently or not support. So I don't know that we need to call it out as a, as an objective for the year.
That's fine with me, Kathy. I was just looking if you wanted some support or something there.
I think we're okay. I mean, I think we're okay. When, you know, when the time comes, if it would definitely, you know, if we have a discussion item or an action item where we need, you know, support and need your guys' input and direction, then, then that would happen at, at that time. But yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to capture it as a, as part of your work plan because it is sort of, it's just part of what you would always do, really. It's not like a special kind of project. So no, I think, I think we're okay. I don't think we need to call it out.
Well, I think if I remember in a discussion that we had last month, didn't we talk about, and I think maybe we had all agreed that in, like maybe under our objective to update emergency plan and procedures, maybe under there, something that's in place. So if something like this were ever to happen again, there would be something in place about closing, opening, or however we wanted to do it. So it would be more of a general work, I mean, a general objective as, as opposed to this real specific objective during this pandemic. You mean, that's an idea, but I, so David, I kind of have, tend to agree with, maybe with Kathy, that I don't think it needs to be called out as a, an, a work objective right now. But maybe we could fold it into maybe the emergency plan and procedures.
I think that's a great idea. Let's, let's just plan to do that. I will update this for January to reflect that, that the emergency plan includes guidance for, you know, this type of emergency, guidance for, you know, pandemic or other, you know, I don't know what we want to call them. But yeah, I think that's a great idea to call that out because, you know, we have, we have documented a lot of those procedures and policies. So it's simply a matter of formalizing them and making them part of this larger document. So I think that's a great idea to include that in here. And I can definitely update the emergency plan item to include that aspect. That's a great idea.
Why? Because I think as we get into further discussion about this, you know, we're gonna probably come up with some other things about having to include in an emergency plan. Because, you know, we're dealing with a physical structure and an infrastructure of the library building that is old. And so some, you know, we, that probably needs to get incorporated too, like, you know, the heating, the air conditioning, the air system, and that would just be a part of it too because that's going to come up with reopening of the library.
So aren't we going to talk about this more under item seven?
Yes.
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 Right.
Yeah.
So if everyone's comfortable with, with that and these four items, we'll, we'll go forward with these four, but we will update the, the one related to emergency planning and procedures to include all of the work we've done around the pandemic and other types of catastrophic things that might, you know, close the library for a month or months at a time or something. So if that's good, then, then we'll just move on to our next item. We'll just stop sharing my screen. And I am going to minimize this so that I can see my notes. So we wanted to basically give you kind of a, just a summary. You know, at the last meeting, we brought up issues of emergency planning and preparedness and OSHA and where are we with all of that? So I will give you an overview and then if you guys can ask questions and Sean may pipe, pipe in because he is our representative on the city's interdepartmental safety committee. So to begin with, the, the last library emergency plan was developed in 2011. There's some rumor that, that one was, that there were some revisions happening in 2014, but I think those hit some kind of administrative hurdle and nothing was ever completed. So they're, they're out of date. 2011 is a long time ago. So, so that's an important thing for us to be working on. But in the meantime, the city has formed what they're calling an interdepartmental safety committee. Sean is our representative on that committee. They're meeting once a month. They first met in October. It's under the direction of the Human Resources Manager. And their goal is to get an updated safety manual for the city, citywide use. They're also going to be inspecting every facility twice a year. They're going to be adding a safety component to new hire orientation. And they're also going to be looking at the training that we undergo. We do do some online training, but they're going to be looking at what in-person training should we be doing and what should be required? You know, things like fire extinguisher training. So, so this is great news that the new HR manager is taking this on and making it happen. And it actually started under Stephanie DeWolf. When she was still here, they, they've started something they're calling a, what is it? IIPP? Sean, what does that stand for?
Injury and Illness, I think, Prevention
Program?
Program, yes.
So they drafted, so in September, the city put together and drafted the Injury and Illness Prevention Program document. And that includes information about, you know, who has the authority, who's responsible, compliance issues, communication protocols, hazard assessment, accident investigation, you know, lots of these kinds of things that should be really managed and at the city level. And then the departments should be, you know, following these guidelines. So that is in draft form, but it's published in draft form. And we have a copy of that. And that's something that that safety committee that Sean is on, is working on. So with those two things in mind, our thinking is that we really would like to do the library's specific manual update after we have the city's new manual because we don't want to make up our own policies when the city is going to give us policies. So I think that that's the timeline we would look at for doing this is, is looking for that document to come out from the city and then looking at what do we need to expand on for the library specifically, especially in terms of the, kind of the, the workflow, like who, who is going to go on the walkthroughs of the, you know, and who's, who's going to do this and who's going to do that? The last time we had our AED, our defibrillator training was when we had our staff training day in, I think, February 2019. We had the AED people here and we're all trained on that. And we also had the fire department here for that meeting. And we did a walk around of the building to see the gas shut off and all of that kind of stuff. But obviously, we need to be doing that more systematically. And I think that the city's plan is going to outline some base requirements for that. And then we can do it more frequently if we think that's appropriate, whatever the case may be. Currently, Sean checks the fire extinguishers every month. And then he handles the annual, you know, maintenance and inspection that happens both for the AED and for the fire extinguishers. So that's kind of where we are in terms of also emergency kits. We do have emergency kits in the building that we updated last year sometime. I can't remember exactly when, but replaced all of the material that was expired or out of date. But I think Sean and I have been talking a lot about, you know, what changes we need to make. And we're talking about having some kits at each person's workstation rather than, you know, the three big kits around the building, which, you know, you might not be anywhere near to if there's a big earthquake or something. So that's sort of where we are. And I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback. But I think that Sean, working on this committee, is, is really key to this, this process, I think. Because I really would like to see the city take the lead on ensuring that we are all in compliance with the things we're supposed to be complying with. And then from there, we can kind of fix, fix our own plan about, you know, our, where we meet outside and who's our, you know, safety monitor and all that kind of stuff that we need to do as a department.
One question, Kathy. Do the staff get CPR training?
Not, no, we do not. We just get the AED training. Some staff are certified, but it's not a requirement. And it's something that I thought of, you know, the fire department offers their CERT training, which I don't know what that stands for either, but that's a pretty intensive training that does, you know, all kinds of emergency preparedness stuff, including the CPR. But it's something we could think about. If we think it's important for staff to get CPR training, we, we can do that. We could get them trained. But no, right now, there's no requirement that they get that.
What is the timeline for the city to complete this?
Do you have any sense? I don't know that they've given us a date, but let's see what Sean.
They, they have not given us a date. I think a lot of it is dependent on COVID. You know, even something as simple as, you know, leading walkthroughs in the building is dependent on that. So right now, I'm waiting to hear when our next meeting will be scheduled for December. And until then, I don't think I have any further information about that.
And the other piece of this, that's a little bit different, but somewhat related, is some of you will remember that we had like a security audit kind of last year. And that sort of all got on hold because, you know, there's a financial component to put in security cameras or put in, you know, new key card locks on our doors. So our back door isn't just unlocked all day. And of course, the, the pandemic and the budget all has been in question. So I do hope that the city will pick up some of that activity again and kind of keep moving towards some of those safety issues that aren't related to emergencies but are significant for staff, you know, to feel that they are safe and have the tools at their disposal to, to be safe. So hopefully that will pick up again once buildings are open again and the budget settles down a little bit.
I have one other question. And do you have regular drills to evacuate the building? I mean, before COVID came, was there ever regular drills?
No, no. And that's one of those things that I think the city should be in charge of and responsible for. I know in my last city, we all have the drill on the same days every year, all the departments. You know, it came from, it came from the top. So no, we have not been doing drills. And I think that's what the Human Resources, the new Human Resources Manager, when he came here, is trying to address some of these things that not just the library should be doing, but everybody should be doing. So no, we are not doing that. I think that in the meantime, I, what I will say is that, you know, we, we are just going to wait to give staff some information that will be helpful. I think we do need to give them and make sure everyone understands what is our location, our gathering location outside? You know, who's, who's going to be the person that checks off the list to make sure who, who's out of the building? You know, we, we need to do some of that sooner rather than later. We can't wait for these, you know, plans to be published for some of that activity. So I think sooner rather than later, we'll, we'll reinstitute the walkthroughs that they had been doing. What they had been doing, I, I saw this in the files today, many years ago. What they would do is assign full-time staff, every month, a different team of staff would walk through the building and check all of the things that kind of needed to be checked. So I think that we'll, we'll institute something like that sooner rather than later just so that people on the, on the very base level are comfortable. If something were to happen, they would know how to evacuate, where to find the fire extinguisher, where to go when they evacuate outside, you know, some of these kinds of things, real basic stuff. So we can do that before we, before the city publishes and finishes their plan.
Question, that's maybe separate topic, but related to training. Is there any plans for any racial bias or unconscious bias training by the city or the departments?
That has been talked about at the city level for sure. They are, I believe, again, it's sort of a COVID, it's, it's a little bit hampered by COVID because I think you like to do that in person if you can. But they are bringing in someone for, to start with the police department and then spread that out to other departments. And I will say that libraries, this is something that is, you know, obviously a topic in libraries. The new American Library Association president is the director of the Santa Monica Public Library. And she's done a ton of that type of work in Santa Monica. So it's a really important thing in her platform in running for ALA president. So I'm hoping to see, you know, more tools rolled out from that level that, that libraries can take advantage of. Because yes, we would like to do some of that, but we don't currently have anything in, in planning. We don't have currently anything, but it's definitely something that's on all of our minds and thinking about those issues and making sure we're, we're addressing and thinking about those things. So yeah, we need to do that. But we'll, but the city is definitely doing something. So we shall see where they end up.
Thank you. It would be really great if the Library Association could provide some resources. That would be a really great way for them.
There, there are some toolkits and there are some classes already that are kind of out there. But frankly, because we haven't had any customers in the building and because we've been so sort of consumed with functioning in these circumstances, we've talked about it and we know we need to do it, but we haven't put it on the calendar or looked at what the best options are to do it. But I do think the ALA will be on top of that. And, and there should be plenty of, you know, courses or, or facilitators or various kinds of things that we can draw on to, to have that conversation and do that type of work.
Kathy, was that, was that your number seven? Did we miss number six?
Yeah, that's okay. We, we just unofficially reordered the agenda, sorry.
So now, we're going to do now, because that, you did give us a list in the
I have a list of things that I was going to just share with you. And I, I decided I prefer to put it in as a discussion item like this because I think what happens sometimes is I'm the last person to do comments after, at communications. And it's the end of the meeting and everyone's worn out. So I thought some of these things, I would rather try to share try to share with you this way. So let me just open my list to make sure that my list is in the same order as yours. So staffing update, just quickly and simply, all of our aid positions that have been vacant are filled. So that's great news. We have a full staff of ten part-time aides and that's made a huge difference. The aides can now help with library takeout. And the librarians who had been having to do library takeout can now do other things. So that's great. The vacant assistant director position is still just in limbo. We are starting budget discussions. So I'm gonna, you know, continue to advocate for that position staying on the books until even if it even if it's not filled and we have a hiring freeze, I'd like the position to stay until there are there are funds available. And then we'll we'll do what we've talked about doing before, which is thinking about what that position should be. So staffing is good. Just this FYI, the California State Library report, all the libraries, public libraries in the state are required to submit statistics every year. And that leads to a really great tool that allows us to look at, you know, compare pretty much any library statistic under the sun with other libraries in the state, either by size or by per capita spending or or whatever it might be. So we did complete that and submit it. And I'm happy to share a copy of it with you. It's probably not super interesting and it's kind of raw form. But after, once all the data is input from around the state, you know, maybe we'll look at some comparisons and get some kind of interesting data about what's happening for us compared to our our peers. The mobile app, I wanted to give you an update. We are very close to being ready to launch that. We have one more meeting with the the vendor to kind of look at anything that they need to fix that we weren't able to do ourselves, but it looks really great. And our digital services librarian Cynthia really did such a phenomenal job. We sort of just threw her in there and she figured it out and got it set up the way we wanted it. And it looks great. And I think that's gonna be a really nice thing to have. So hopefully, hopefully, by the end of December, it depends on when we can meet with this consultant that's assigned to us. We'll see when she has availability. So that's exciting and that's almost ready. I wanted to tell you about some of the collection changes that we have made for for twenty twenty-one, basically. So magazine subscriptions, as you probably know, magazines have been going out of business all over the place and they're not getting as much use. We do keep statistics on magazine checkout and in-house use of magazines. So the city really needed all the departments to find ways to cut their operations budgets if possible. And since we'd been meaning to do some pretty, pretty heavy cutting in magazines anyway, we took that opportunity and we did do so. So we cut, we went from a hundred and twenty-four subscriptions down to sixty-eight. So that's fifty-six titles that we deleted for twenty twenty-one. And we'll see how that goes. If the public, the staff have been given some language to, you know, to to explain to customers why we don't have that magazine anymore. And to take the feedback about those, you know, oh, I really need that magazine or I really love that magazine. Why would you do that? So that we can revisit, because you can revisit these at any time and add magazines back in at any time, as long as you have the money to pay for them. So I I think that the choices we made are really good. I mean, we're talking about things that, you know, we're spending a hundred and fifty dollars a year for two people to use it. It's a pretty high per-use cost for some of these titles. So we will see. There may be some people that are not happy with some of our decisions, but we'll we'll see how how that goes. I think right now, because the library is not open to the public, they won't even notice. They're not gonna know and notice until we're open again. So we'll see how that goes. But that's that was pretty substantial. And again, it's always reversible when there's more money. But to be honest, magazine use is really on the decline, especially in a big metropolitan area like this, where so many other libraries have really good and easy digital magazine resources. You know, LAPL, some of these other libraries have all the magazines you would ever want to read digitally. And they're they're just really easy to use. And that leads me into my next topic, which is the digital resources, which we are also cutting and have wanted to cut for a while. You know, our argument has been for some time that we really can't cut these because we haven't, we don't have a digital services person. We don't have enough staff to do the outreach to find out whether people don't need them or whether they just don't know what we have. So I think that we felt pretty comfortable now. We've had Cynthia on board since January. And she was able to look really, you know, do a really good look at the statistics and really look at the the value. And also to look again, you know, when you're in a big metropolitan area, you don't have to have every resource because other libraries have those resources. So we are cutting something called Scholastic, which is, you know, Scholastic books, a children's thing. It's really duplicative. I mean, we have World Book and we have Britannica, both of those encyclopedias. So Scholastic really was sort of duplicative. I don't remember whether or not the schools have that. The schools may have a subscription and that might have played into our decision-making as well. So Scholastic, we are, we are discontinuing. But again, we'll see if that's if that needs to be changed. We can always change it later. Another product that we are now getting from the state library for free is a ProQuest tool for students. And and we used to pay for it about a thousand dollars a year, but now we're gonna get it free from the state. So we're cutting that from our budget since it's free. And schools get that one as well. We're also cutting something called Learning Express. Learning Express is a kind of a test prep application. So, you know, you can go in there and and do SAT prep and stuff like that. But tutor.com, which we also have, has all the same stuff. And we, again, Cynthia did a really good analysis of all of the all that those two different resources offer and felt pretty strongly that tutor.com was the better choice. Learning Express has a few things for adult kind of skill building, but very limited. And we felt like if we wanted to do adult resources for kind of skill building and job preparedness and that kind of thing, there there are better products out there. And we did set aside some money in the budget to to do something like that, if in fact, we decide we want to do that. So Learning Express, we will get rid of. And again, these not being used, Learning Express not being used. So it's just money that three thousand dollars a year for very little usage. And then we are getting rid of our our LA, our index to the LA Times. It's very, very clunky. It's not the current issue. Nobody knows how to use it. It's really, it's really not a great thing, but we're hoping that through the California State Library, the California Library Services Act funding, my hope is that that the Southern California Library Cooperative, which is our kind of cooperative public library group for Southern California, we're getting funding from the California Library Services Act. And I'm hoping that that money might go toward a more user-friendly version of the LA Times that we can offer. So that's that's what we're hoping there. Again, LA Times, that LA Times ProQuest, the only usage is us looking up obituaries, pretty much. Public is not using that product, almost never. And then the last thing that we're getting rid of, which was definitely probably the hardest decision to make, but I think I think it's a good decision is what's called, it's GALE. It's our index to periodicals, like a broad, broad swath, you know, thousands of periodicals. So sort of a general research, you know, college, freshman college student, high school student kind of thing. It's more than five thousand dollars a year. It doesn't get very much use. And I think we're we're exploring a pilot project with Cersei Dynex, which is our integrated library system vendor. They are offering a new product that is it it provides access to open access research articles from a wide variety of publications. Again, you know, thousands of publications, and it integrates those results into the catalog. So it's a much more user-friendly way, I think, for our students to to access articles than the GALE platform is. So hopefully, we'll be entering into that. We would be a pilot site for that program. So we would get a very big discount to be part of their pilot program. And it looks really great. So I'm hoping that we will, we will do that and see how that goes. And then again, in the meantime, if people need these resources, they're they're available with a Pasadena library card, with a Glendale library card, with an LA public library card, with any number of other bigger libraries, library cards. So those are the ones that we're cutting. And then the other thing I should mention, and I don't know if I've mentioned before, is that from the state library, we're getting also the Britannica Encyclopedia for free. We're getting something called Teaching Books from them for free. That's a really great resource that's sort of geared toward maybe teachers who are teaching about literature and and language arts. But it's great for readers who want to find author interviews and things like that. So that we get free from the state. And now we are also getting free from the state, something called Jobs Now and something called Vet Now, Veterans Now. So those are both both resources for, you know, economic development and and helping people find jobs. So those are coming out of the pandemic. The state is providing those statewide. And then, of course, we have the things that the friends offer or pay for, Manga Languages, ancestry.com, Comics Plus, which is the comics and and manga platform. And then RB Digital Magazines, which was our or is, I guess, our digital magazine platform. That has been purchased by Overdrive and it will no longer be an option for us. The what what Overdrive is offering is is astronomically too expensive for us. So we won't have our digital magazine platform anymore. And again, depending on what happens with the California Library Services Act, we may, out of that may also come access to digital magazines for us. So we'll see where that goes. The digital magazines are not, we're not getting that much use anyway. So again, all of our our website, you know, our webpage that lists all these products explains why we're, you know, where it's gone, why we don't have it, where else they could go for these similar kinds of things. So we're trying to kind of bridge the gap for for people who who were using these these products and where where else they can go to find them. And same with the magazines, you know, we're we're putting together a list of if you're a big reader of, you know, Aviation Weekly in in the paper format, you know, we're gonna let people know who still carries that magazine. So that's the update on those collection changes. Does anybody have questions about that that you want to ask before we move on?
Yeah, Kathy, how how much is the overall savings, including the magazines?
Question, let me see if my my notes here. I pasted some stuff into a screen to make my life easier. My overall savings, let's see. Did I take it out? Yeah. So Scholastic was forty-three hundred dollars. Sears was a thousand, so that's fifty-three. Learning Express was three thousand, that's eight or three thousand two hundred. So that's eighty-four, eight thousand four hundred. LA Times, three thousand four hundred. So where are we now? About twelve thousand or eleven thousand? And then a little more than five thousand. So it's about sixteen thousand dollars.
And that's sixteen thousand from the digital platforms and then from the magazines?
Oh, the magazines, it's about I want to say about thirty-five hundred dollars.
So about two twenty thousand in total between the two.
And we did ask for, like I said, so we we cut these, but we asked for funding. We didn't cut the budget by that same amount because we asked for funding so that we could add in a different digital resource if we chose. So like I said, we were looking at LinkedIn Learning or something called Knowledge City. Those are both kind of, you know, adults, self-learning platforms. We've looked at those. If we add in this index and and full text magazine stuff into the catalog, we would have the funding for that. Excuse me. And then Canopy, which is, you know, continues to be very popular and is expensive. You know, we can always add more funds to that resource. So, yeah, but it's 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 pretty significant. Pretty significant reduction in in the spending.
And one other question from your report is, when when does the state provide back the information, the combined information from all the statistics from the various libraries?
They're not always very fast. And it's a little bit different every year. I think it depends on their staffing. I don't even know if I can say for sure. Basically, eventually, we get an email that says, okay, all the data is is in is there. And then you can go in and run whatever kinds of reports you like. But the deadline was, is it, was it October first? No, it was November first, Sean?
November, yes, it was early November.
Early November. So I mean, it's gonna be at least a couple of months. I think they don't run it around very fast.
So usually by the beginning of the second quarter, you have it.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even, yeah, we'll we'll just have to keep an eye on it and let you guys know. I think that this year we were a little bit late with our submission. And when I said to her, I'm so sorry, we're late, she said, oh, please. All the libraries are, you know, everybody is late. So I think they do, there is some, you know, scrambling around to get to get data from all the libraries. And this this comes from the Institute for Museum and Library Services. So it's tied into being able to get grant funding and things like that. So people kind of have to participate. But I know that sometimes they spend some time, you know, catching people who have not submitted. So hopefully, in a few months, we'll have that. It is really interesting and fascinating, you know.
I recall seeing it one year, not this year, because I think all the other stuff that was going on.
Yeah, I think my first year, I printed, I brought some of that to the board because I was interested in it. I mean, the problem with it is the data is only as good as the submissions that people give. And sometimes I think they try really hard to provide good definitions and scope notes for what they're asking for. But I think sometimes there's still some room for people not agreeing on what something might might actually mean. But but overall, it's really interesting and useful information. So let's see, social media reach. I wanted to share this with you. I was gonna share this in a more attractive format, but I didn't get time to do it. But I just wanted to kind of give you guys a sense of where we are with our social media outreach. Because all of the social media, you know, when I came, we started the Facebook page, but we weren't super active on it. I mean, we were more active there than maybe elsewhere. But the Facebook page, and then we started Instagram in in late May twenty twenty. And we started our YouTube channel also in late May twenty twenty. And then Constant Contact, which I started when I came, but Cynthia has really, you know, brought it up to speed. We we had Constant Contact, but we weren't emailing anything very often. And now we're emailing things, you know, with some regularity. So Constant Contact, we have three, three thousand forty-one subscribers to our email list. So that's a pretty good number of people and we get a pretty good percentage of opens when we send something. Instagram, we've had again since late May, May twenty eighth, so really June. We have six hundred and fifty-four followers on Instagram, which we're pleased with. That's a pretty good growth rate. The YouTube channel, we don't have that many subscribers. We have fifty-nine subscribers. But our total views of our videos is almost four thousand views. And the Storytime videos, since we started them in the summer, have had one thousand two hundred ninety-five views. So that's pretty awesome, because I don't think we get a thousand two hundred kids in person for Storytime over that many months. So we're actually reaching a lot of people, which is pretty, pretty neat. And then Facebook, at this point, we have one thousand two hundred and forty-two Facebook followers. And so all of those, I think, you know, thanks to And so all of those, I think, you know, thanks to Cynthia. And her hard work and the whole Public Services team, they have a whole complicated plan for who posts what, when, how often. And they're very on top of it and and making sure that content is coming out regularly and and staying. Fresh and interesting. So they're doing a really great job. And I just wanted to share those those numbers with you. And. Find Free Implementation. I think that in the, so I sent you guys that separately. I didn't want to have it in the packet because it's the, you know, Stafford Council Report and it hadn't been published for council. So it's come out now, I believe, in the council report. But in that package, you will have seen. The kind of appendix that's the implementation plan. If you, I just wanted to give everyone a sense of what the steps are that are going into making that happen. And when they're going to happen. I mean, from the public's perspective, it's sort of seamless because we're already not charging fines. And we haven't been since, you know, March, middle of March. But there are a number of things we have to do. We need to reach out to the customers that still haven't returned their materials from March. So that they aren't suddenly shocked by having, you know, all these lost items on their account. So we need to do some kind of targeted outreach to people who who need to bring things back. And we do need to do, obviously, publicity kind of, you know, spread the word and and get people excited about it. If it passes, of course, if the if the city council approves it. And then we have a lot of backend, that that's the main thing. We have a lot of backend things to do in the system. And luckily, Cersei Dynex has. They actually have like a fine free consulting service that's they don't charge for. So they kind of help you. Get through all the bits and pieces of kind of making this transition and doing the setup on the backend. And then we'll also work with them to reconfigure all of our notifications because the notification process has to to change. And and so that will all happen. And I just wanted you guys to kind of be aware of that and have seen that. So you hopefully you saw it. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. No, okay. Rick Thomas, I wanted to share with you, let me just open this so that you can see it. Olivia, you know, we obviously, you know, we purchased the Rick Thomas collections from him. And Olivia is really, really fast. And has already completed the Finding Aid. So let me just share my screen if I can. Sorry, I have to move this around to do this. So if you go to our. Local history. Page, which is here, and then you go to Finding Aids, which is here. At the bottom, you'll see the Rick Thomas Archive Finding Aid. So that's a document that basically. Captures everything that he donated to us in detail. So this is searchable and people can, you know, look for things they need. The content here also gets added to the master collection list, which is also searchable. So if, you know, if you're a homeowner and you live on Oak Street, you can type Oak and you'll get everything in these are in these archives that have to do with that thing. So. This is great to have this captured and 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 it just has everything we need to know. So now she's moving on to digitizing the material so that we can start to do the fun stuff with it, which is share it with people. So I just wanted to show you that, though, so that you can kind of see how she processes a collection like this. And what a great resource it is for people who want to know what we have. So I'll stop sharing, go back to our regular screen and. The budget, I wanted to just briefly update you on the budget. So the city is now, we're kind of going back to working on the budget for this fiscal year, even though we're already halfway through it. So basically, we've all been, all the departments have been spending very conservatively, knowing that there is not a budget yet. We, as a department, the library department, has sort of been spending with the proposed budget we submitted before in mind. But even that, we're not even close to to spending that. So this week I had a meeting with the the interim finance director and the assistant to the city manager and one of the senior finance staff. And we went over the library's budget and it's pretty much submitting the same amounts that we submitted last time, except for a few small adjustments. And probably the the most significant adjustment is an increase in our building maintenance account to pay for the porta potty. And all of the cleaning and spraying and all of the things that we need for COVID. So that is now captured in our budget. And hopefully, I mean, this is obviously preliminary. It hasn't all been put together and and then reviewed and submitted to council. But that was probably the the biggest change, really, was the was that line item. But everything else, I think we're still very much on track to for for the part time budget amount that I had proposed. We're on track to to be fine with that amount. Trying to look to see, is there anything else about the budget? I think that's really it. I just wanted to to let you know that we did. Take into account the need for extra money for some of these COVID related things. So we'll see where that ends up. Basically, they're meeting with every department. They'll put it together, see whether we're still short. If we're short, by how much are we short? I mean, I think this is basically a whole new staff, so they really don't know. They really have to, I think, start over. So we'll see. I mean, I had even said, oh, I can cut here, I can cut there. And they were like, no, no, let's just leave it. And let's see, maybe we're fine, you know. So hopefully we'll be fine. We'll find out. Let's see, the last. Oh, I did want to mention the scenic. So scenic is our our Wi Fi service, as you know. And that was on a five year contract. And we don't actually negotiate the contract. So we get that service through Khalifa, which is our library, one of our library consortiums here in Southern California. And so they have gone out to, they had gone out, they went out to bid for a new contract. And the new contract is way less expensive than the next, the the old contract. So that's going to be really great for us. The out of pocket. Not including. Taxes and fees for the year in the new contract, which will not be next fiscal year, but not this fiscal year, but the next. It will be nine thousand six hundred and twenty two dollars, which is almost thirty five percent less than what we've been paying for the last five years. So that's it's huge. A really big, a really big reduction. So that's great. You know, maybe it means we can spend that money elsewhere, hopefully. So I wanted to share that with you and a couple of updates just about the building and and what's happening in the building. A couple of things, you may have noticed, we have a drinking fountain. If you've been around the building, they put a nice new drinking fountain in out in Library Park in front of the library. It has a bottle filling station. So we're really excited about that. We've wanted it for a really long time. And I think the pandemic is what finally made it happen. Because, you know, people couldn't come inside to use the drinking fountain. So too bad it didn't happen in the summer when it was really hot, but it's there now and that's going to be great. I also wanted to let you know that I talked to Public Works about doing some trimming of the trees on the El Centro Community Room side. I've been looking at a lot of old historic photos of the building and it has such a beautiful facade, that side of the building, that nineteen thirties building. But you you can't see it because those trees are so overgrown and growing, you know, right over the roof. And so they're going to do some trimming on those trees, which hopefully will make our historic building look a little bit nicer. So I'm excited about that. The Emergency Egress Lighting Project that's been in the works for like three and a half years is actually now like borderline about to happen. The contract, my understanding is that the contract has been signed and we're just kind of now working on. The last little details, we being Public Works, not me. So we're sort of beholden to Public Works, but I think we're really close to getting that done, which will be great because we certainly can't open to the public until that gets fixed and replaced. The other thing I wanted to mention, we are getting indoor drinking fountains that have a bottle filler also. And I think those also have been, you know, kind of trickling along and not happening very quickly, partly probably because of the pandemic. I think that those are going to get installed in January. And I think, as I mentioned last time, we're looking at shelving for the wall across from the circulation desk. And I put I put that into the budget. For the, you know, this mid year kind of relooking at the budget, I put that in and and we'll see where that ends up. But it's pretty clear that takeout, the way we're doing it, is not really compatible with letting people into the building. So we really do need some shelving for holds, even even if we weren't doing takeout, you know. Before the library only let people put holds on items that were checked out. Now you can put a hold on anything. So holds are going to be continued to be a huge number. And the amount of space that we built into the new reference desk for holds will never accommodate. Even when we are back to normal and open, that won't accommodate all those holds. So we definitely need that shelving across from the desk. So those things are in in the works slowly. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you guys about is just COVID. Our friend COVID. I mean, if you're following the the county and the news, you know that the numbers are are astronomical. The the county update today, the daily cases was twelve thousand something cases today. So it's, you know, two thousand more than yesterday. So. We are just trying to do our best to continue to be very to take all the precautions that we're supposed to take and to follow all the protocols and guidelines that the county has provided. The county does allow libraries to be open at twenty percent capacity. But as I said, none of them are, except for Alhambra. And I think that. My feeling is that it would be irresponsible to to let people into the building and give them an opportunity to congregate and gather when we are at a saturation point like this. Today, we had the statewide library directors call, which is all library directors from across the state. And it was fascinating to hear people talking about, you know, from all over the state, up north of one of the counties, and I can't remember which county, they closed takeout and their in person services. So people are having different reactions and there's just this sort of disconnect between the official guidelines, which are libraries can be open twenty percent. And the official guidelines that say, don't leave your house except for essential services. So it's like, well, why are we even open if we're we're not really essential? So there's some disconnect, but I think that we're going to stay the course on on staying. You know, not having people in the building. The computer by appointment setup is is ready to go, other than the piece. We still have to kind of have the staffing discussion and talk to staff about how that will work and how who will staff it and who will clean and who will do the different things that have to happen. But all the technical pieces are done. So the the web based signup is 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 active and we can move forward with that when we're ready. But honestly, with the the case rates and the hospitalizations, I I I think we're not going to do that until things maybe settle down a little. So we'll wait to see where we are after. I think the Christmas holiday and see if 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 these measures they've been taking start to to help. And if the holidays don't make it worse. So that's that's what I would like to do. I don't know if you guys have different feelings about that, but I would like to not do computer appointments yet. But our plan had been to do that now. But like I said on the call today, people who libraries who had just started doing that stopped it. You know, I think people are 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 feeling like. They don't want to be the source of of people getting sick. You know, or or behaviors that would that would lead to people getting sick. And again, we haven't had, I mean. Very little demand for this. I mean, we we are not getting calls or nothing. I mean, no one's saying, maybe once in a while, but almost no one is saying, you know, hey, I need I need to get in there using computer. So I think that. You know, with that in mind, that we aren't getting that kind of demand, I feel better about waiting a little bit longer. Or the other thing we could think about is doing like one person at a time. Because we have four workstations, they're distanced, properly distanced and all of that. But, you know, thinking about four people getting together in that space for an hour is is doesn't seem quite right. So that's another option is we could think about opening it up, but to literally just like maybe one person at a time, just so there is one resource for someone who doesn't have connectivity in their personal life that they could come in and use the library computers.
Well, I, you know, I don't, I mean, I I know my feelings are, I mean, you guys are there and I trust the professional staff and your comfort levels. And also we have to follow, you know, the the rules of the of the county. So I'm. I'm fine saying, no, let's wait, let's hold off on everything. But that because I, you know, I trust your guys' opinions. I don't know about my fellow trustees.
I I I just think it's the wrong time. I think we're in the holiday period. Why take on something else at this time? It's not going to hurt to leave it till the beginning of the year.
That's what I thought. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
If you're not hearing a lot of demand, Kathy, then I I think, you know, you all know best of how much this is an urgent need for folks who are using the library. And yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so I think we'll we'll revisit it in January. We're gonna, we're gonna be pretty focused on the fine free stuff and getting the app launched. And maybe once those two things are off off the, you know, taken care of, maybe then we we look at that and maybe that'll kind of be coming together with a downturn in the number of cases and the severity. So the app, so that's sort of where we are. Just it's challenging.
Well, thank you. That was a very thorough, yeah, and you know, that was, you know, a large operation, operational update. So but it was very.
Kind of boring. I hope it was not.
No, it was very, no, it was very thorough. So thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or? Anything they want to go over with Kathy in regards to the operational update, operations update?
Not related to the operations update. I I'm just, is the city planning to do anything in lieu of the holiday party they normally do, is it?
Yes, so they are, so every year, the the management staff donate funds. And we do like the gift card giveaways at the holiday luncheon. So we're still going to do the giveaways. We're just not having a holiday luncheon. And I think that each staff member is going to get some little package with some goodies or, you know, candy or something from the city. That's what we've been talking about as the the management team has been talking about doing. And just today, Barb and Mait and I were talking about what we might do here. I mean. We. I I I'm a little reluctant to do like a Secret Santa or White Elephant this year, just because some of our employees, you know, they they lost their other jobs. They don't, this is their only job. They don't have their other job. I I don't want to put people in a position where they feel like they have to spend any money. So so, you know, the soup, the the senior staff here will do some little things for people. And yes, the city will do their raffle, they're going to raffle things off and, you know. Do send little somethings. And I think, you know, they're getting the city council to write a Christmas card to everybody or something like that. So they'll get some recognition and and, you know, appreciation for how hard they've been working during such, you know, trying times. Because it definitely has been trying. And I am happy to say, I I think our staff, I mean. I hope this is true, but I I think morale here is pretty good. People, I think, are glad to be working. They're glad to be helping customers and getting that nice feedback that we get from customers who, you know, nine out of ten are so thankful and they say so, you know. So it's, I think that staff are are feeling pretty good and I and they're being very, you know, cautious. We had an employee who who thought, you know, somebody she's exposed to might have been exposed to someone who might have been exposed. And she told, you know, she came and said, this is what happened. And, you know, do I do I need to quarantine? What do I need to do? So everyone's really, I think, feels pretty safe being here and feels pretty good about being at work. So I don't think. I don't think our morale is going to be. I don't think our morale is going to be impacted by not having the holiday luncheon. So I think that we're okay this year without a holiday luncheon.
Well, let's all, well, everybody's looking forward to a better twenty twenty one. So many, many different ways. So.
Kathy, if any of us wanted to, as board members, kind of pitch in to put together just like a little breakfast package, you know, I was going to drop something off for you guys, but I wanted to wait for this meeting for anyone else. Like, am I allowed to email my fellow board members to ask them about that? Or how would we, how would I coordinate something?
Hard to coordinate a little bit. So you have to we could talk, you talk about it now. We probably should wait till we get to communications and talk about it under board member communications.
Yeah. Annie, why don't you bring it up then? That's a good idea. I was, yeah, I was, yeah, I'm on another board, and that was something that we talked about. So thank you, Annie.
Yeah, it was interesting on the call today with the other directors, one of the topics that they asked us to talk about was morale and the holidays. And, and, you know, people are doing that kind of, the kind of stuff that we're doing and obviously not the get togethers. But I was surprised by how many libraries, the Friends group does something for the staff and our friends doesn't do that to my knowledge. I mean, I'm sure if I asked them, they would, but they, that's not traditionally something they do, I don't think. So yeah, you're welcome to do something. The only caveat is that we're not allowed to have like shared food. So like, you know, we can't have a potluck, or we can't even bring, you know what I mean? We're not supposed to take our masks off. So the only time we take our masks off is when we eat. And even then, we're very limited to the number of people that can be in the same space. So shared, you know, communal food is problematic, but other things I'm sure would be appreciated. So we can talk about that.
Yeah. So we'll bring that up. All right. So let's then move on, because I am, I do, I am cognizant of the time here. So we're going into communications and I'll start as a board president. I don't have any communications other than that, you know, I shared with you. And I think Kathy and I were at the Friends library. David wasn't able to go, so we'll have some more communications in regards to the Friends. But I, at this time, I do want to, as you know, this is Deborah Beadle's last trustee meeting with us. So I just wanted to express a thank you, and it's been wonderful to have you on the board. And we will definitely miss you, but we understand, you know, that, you know, work and everything with your new job. But, you know, you walk by my house all the time, Deborah, so we'll still get to see you, you and David and your dog. So but I do want to say thank you very much, Deborah, for your service. We really do appreciate it. And just to remind everybody, then we will be getting a new board member. I saw on the city website, they're asking for people to apply for commissions. So again, fellow commissioners, if you know of anybody, kind of encourage people to apply for the library board. And then the mayor appoints the commissions. And then I guess the mayor will appoint the liaison. So, and this will probably happen in February?
No, it should happen sooner than that, because, you know, if we're supposed to be approving those work plans in January, they kind of need to. So yeah, we have a meeting on obviously December sixteenth. And then January sixth may, the normal meeting may be canceled because it's the timing with the whatever, but they're going to try to get people appointed in as soon as they can, as they like, to fill the, to fill the rest of Deborah's position. If David, who has expressed an interest in that, and that they can easily do, they can throw that into the agenda on the sixteenth. So I think we'll, we'll see. I don't know how long, but I don't think they want to wait.
Now, do I, do I, do I need to, do we need to let the city know anything about Deborah?
That she's We've already submitted her petition to them and proposed, you know, let them know that David would be interested in finishing her term, because David terms out this December thirty first. So, yeah, no, they have everything they need. And we saw Maria, the city clerk emailed us today. So they're they're working with the new mayor Mahmoud to get all these appointments done.
Well, but again, thank you, Deborah. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything or?
Yeah, no, I did. I just wasn't sure if now was the time with communications. But I did want to say it's been a pleasure working on the board with all of you. And especially you, Kathy, for the last two years. And it's just, it's been an honor to do it. And I wish you all the best for next year. And hopefully, twenty twenty one will be a better year for everybody. And things will be able to open the library again. So, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure having you on the board. Really appreciate it a lot. So I hope you'll stay in touch.
Like, like Bianca said, I am around. So I do a lot of walking.
And then, so we'll just go around board members. And why don't we start with Annie? Shall we start with you, Annie? Then you can bring up your ID again.
Yes. So I guess if we can think about as an optional an option for all the board members to pitch in to get the staff lunch one day, I'd love for us to support a local South Pasadena restaurant. I know there's a couple who could really just use it also. And I think the staff would really appreciate it. I'm happy to support that. And it'd be great to like, maybe know how many people, Kathy, what would be like a good day for that to happen? And those who are willing, I don't want to go on the spot, but willing to pitch in, then we can raise our hands now and we can look at estimate for how much it would be. And I can take PayPal or something to happy to coordinate and order it.
Let me, let me think about the number and staff and day and all of that and talk to my staff and send an email tomorrow. And then maybe, you know, you and Bianca, maybe Bianca, I mean, and I can help coordinate too, whatever. But let me think about that a little and talk to staff, because they're, not everyone's here every day. So I want to think about how to do it in a way that nobody is left out.
Do we, Annie, Annie, would it be, could we maybe do like a gift card?
Yeah, I just thought of that too. I didn't think about the fact not everyone's here every day.
Yeah.
They would be very appreciative of any, you know, even just a little token, they would be, they would find that very sweet.
Well, I think so, so that we don't, you know, the brown, the brown, whatever it is, the brown Brown Act, the Brown Rules, the Brown Act. Thank you, Deborah. Maybe right now, we could just vote that we're in favor of supporting some kind of a gift for the staff. And then and then Annie and I can talk about, you know, how much that would be, or we can think of a budget right now and say, okay, it'll be, we'll just, you know, so much budget and then however much people want to give. I don't know. How do we? Anybody got any ideas how you want to go forward with this? Because what, we can't, we can't email each other then on this?
Here's what I would do. I would see if people are willing, you find out now, yes or no, I'm willing to participate. And then I can email the two of you tomorrow, let you know how many staff and kind of give you a sense. And then you know who was interested in being involved, and you can email them one at a time. You know, you can email David and you can email
Got it, got it. That's right. All right. So why not, so it sounds like there's a motion on the table then that we want to, the Board of Trustees would like to support, you know, a holiday gift for the staff. And just like the way Kathy explained it, that she'll talk to the staff and then she'll get back to Annie and I. And then Annie and I will separate out and then email each of you.
You know, Bianca, do you really have that emotion? Can we just have a show of hand?
I don't know.
It's no, it's not on the agenda. So it's just
I'm not even really sure this is library board business.
Oh.
I think this is kind of outside of the board. If you guys want to get together and have a party, I think that's fine. But I'm not sure that it really rises to the level of a public discussion in a public meeting.
Good point. All right. So can we then?
You just reach out by email. I mean, you know, one on one.
Oh, so we can, okay. All right. Then let's do that. Okay. So we'll do that. All right. Thank you.
You and Annie tomorrow, Bianca.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you. So let's move on. All right. Next board members, David, do you have any comments?
No, no.
Deborah, did you have anything more?
That's it. Just thank you again.
Mario?
No comments.
Okay. And Annie, did you have anything again?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. And then we'll move on to the, to the Friends.
I have a report submitted by the president of the Friends, Ellen Torres, and she wanted me to report the following. The Friends Emergency Fund, their fundraising effort that they've undertaken recently, has raised over thirteen thousand dollars. Ellen did a Giving Tuesday for the Friends on Facebook and has raised, I checked it just a minute ago, one thousand five hundred and forty five dollars through thirty donors. She wanted to specifically thank Ed Donnelly for sharing that post to the nine one oh three oh Facebook page. She said about half of the donations came from that sharing that Ed Donnelly did. And she encourages everyone else to go to her Facebook page and share the post as well, if they're comfortable doing so. She wanted to point out that there had been a really nice article in the South Pasadena Review by Andy Lippman that featured the Friends and other local organizations and kind of how they've been impacted by the pandemic. And the struggle that they're going through to raise funds and to stay functional during this time. So that was a really nice article that brought some nice attention to a lot of groups in town. She wanted to let you know that the Friends bylaws and a board restructuring, so the bylaws are being updated and the board being restructured, and they're working on job descriptions for the different board positions. And that all should be finalized in December and voted on at the annual meeting in January. So that's a lot of progress. That's been a lot of work and a long time coming. The Friends proposed budget for twenty twenty one, they are on a calendar year, not a fiscal year like we are, was voted on by the board today at their meeting and will be presented for approval at the annual meeting in January. The nominating committee is currently meeting and will present the slate to be voted on at the annual meeting in January. The Friends membership campaign for twenty twenty one is underway and letters will be mailed next week. I think they said they're mailing to about thirteen hundred people. And then actual items on their meeting today, the Friends voted to approve the Restoration Concert Committee presenting a New Year's concert on the Friends YouTube channel. So the Restoration Concert Committee is using funds to, what they have proposed is to record two concerts without audiences, just the musicians in the community room, and then stream those online. And they are going to, the dates are now postponed. We were going to do early January, but I said we cannot do that based on the county's restrictions right now. So when we can reset those dates, we will. And they'll record, one of the concerts will be the New Hollywood String Quartet, which is one of their very popular acts that they present. And then Robert Feis, the pianist, would be the second concert. So hopefully, that will happen in the new year and bring a lot of pleasure to the people that are missing those concerts. And then lastly, she mentions that the Friends bookstore is still closed and they are not sure when it will reopen. And she wishes a happy holidays to the trustees and the staff and their families. And that is the report from the Friends.
Thank you, Kathy. And then that will cover the trustee liaison to the Friends also. So David, you were in good hands. Kathy and I were there. So and Kathy, do you have any last?
Not that I know of, just happy holidays. I hope everyone stays safe and and be careful. And I wish you all the best and thank you.
All right. So well, that then adjourns our meeting at eight twenty three. And I echo the same words as Kathy. Everybody be happy and safe and stay well and healthy and happy holidays, everybody. And thank you, everybody. Thank you. This has been a good, a good committee. So thank you.
Thanks, Bianca.
Night, everybody.
Goodbye.